All right, it is 7:01 and I would call this meeting of the Lansing City Council to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Uh, councilmember Betts.
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
She's present. Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Now I can, yeah.
Alright, sorry.
And councilmember Wood.
Here.
And councilmember Dunbar?
Not yet, but I'm hearing her report. She's coming.
Dunbar is absent.
Hey, um, just a second. Double checking that she didn't come in. Okay. Oh, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
So we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Is there anybody that the mayor or, I'm sorry, the councilmembers or the mayor would like or the clerk would like us to keep in our thoughts as we reflect this evening? Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I would like us to keep in our thoughts the family of James Butler, uh, Reshan and and the rest of the family. Uh, he passed away and it was a funeral over the weekend. It's beautiful.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would ask that we, um, keep Damion Casola, better known as Dom, uh, as well as his loved ones and our thoughts and prayers tonight. Dom, uh, passed away of natural causes. I believe it was on Friday, August 14th, and he leaves behind, um, both of his parents, a daughter, uh, two sisters, uh, several other family members. Um, and and just very quickly, uh, Dom was, you know, in a really incredible, uh, and important part of the greater Lansing percussion community. Uh, he was a member of the Everett High School Drum Line back in the eighties. Uh, he went on to march at Michigan State, and he was actually one of the founding members of the Detroit Pistons Drum Line. Um, he was an incredible drummer, um, but I think to our community, uh, he was incredibly important as a, as a teacher and a mentor, um, and he served in that role even for me. Uh, so again, I would appreciate it if folks could, uh, remember Mr. Casola tonight, and of course, uh, those who we left behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Um, did I, I saw, I saw another hand, but it looks like it's disappeared. All right. So, uh, this evening, we've been asked to keep in our thoughts the families of James Butler and Dom Casola. Please join me in a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. And now for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we are to the, uh, print council proceedings and we have proceedings from July 13th, 27th, and August 10th.
Mr. Vice President will entertain a motion to approve all three at once, if you don't mind.
I would move to, uh, approve the printed council proceedings for all three dates as presented.
Motion for us is the approval of the council proceedings for this 13th, 27th, and the 10th of August. Is there any discussion on, um, this item? Seeing now, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
There are seven days, zero days, the motion is adopted, and, uh, that takes us to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Uh, do we have any comments from councilmembers? Uh, Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to announce two things that are coming up. The first one is, um, we received information from the Inham County Health Department. So in cooperation with the Inham County Health Department, Sparrow Health Systems, and Dean Transportation, they have, uh, begun operation of their mobile health bus. Um, the first date was last Thursday, August, uh, 20th, at the South Side Community Coalition here on, um, Holmes Road. The next date is, um, Monday, August 31st, from 1:00 to 5:00, at the Allen Neighborhood Center. Um, the mobile health bus screens for blood pressure, um, diabetes, cholesterol, um, and behavior health. Uh, they, services they have are, um, immunizations, flu shots, and they also do screenings, um, and referrals for, uh, cancer and mammograms. And the next, um, location is, um, next Thursday, September 17th, or September 17th, and it's back at the South Side, um, Community Coalition. The other thing I wanted to bring, uh, to attention is, um, the Lansing School District, um, in cooperation with the Lansing Fire Department announces a fire services academy. Um, and and this academy, um, will be held in person at the Hill Community Center, and, uh, the students will learn the foundational skills, um, necessary to pursue a career in the fire department. Um, and it's limited to just 10 students. And, um, while the, the admission, uh, to this program is competitive, you have to undergo an, uh, interview with not only, um, Lansing Fire Department, but also Lansing School District, the benefits are enormous. And so, um, it would start you, uh, off on the right path to have a career in fire science. And so I encourage parents to talk to their students if they're going in to, um, to look that up and, um, and apply. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Um, please, Mr. Clerk, let the record flow at 7:07. Uh, Councilmember Dunbar was joining the meeting. Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I am going to be having a constituency coffee hour slash meeting via Zoom on the 29th at 11:00 a.m. I will be sending it to you. Anybody can email me or call me. I'll give you a link or Facebook something very much.
Councilmember Betts, I heard you suggest a coffee hour at 11:00 p.m. Was that the?
Oh, definitely not. 11:00 a.m. Thank you.
Uh, councilmember Wood.
Uh, thank you. Um, in, uh, cooperation with Inham County, they are having a COVID testing at Kroger's on, um, on West Jolly, or West Jolly, West Holmes, um, 912, or 921 West Holmes, on August 26th, that's Wednesday, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Um, it is free, and so anyone who, um, might want to, um, get out, they are doing walk-ups as well as drive-ups. And again, that is Wednesday, August 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Kroger's on West Holmes.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Any further question, comments from councilmembers? Okay, uh, moving on, Mr. Clerk.
Um, thank you, President Spatafor. I do have a couple of election-related announcements. I committed the whole in a couple of weeks, so I'll keep it relatively brief. Um, we are processing the applications that we have had for multiple elections or that came in from the election. We have already, um, in the computer scheduled over 20,000 absentee ballot applications. Um, so, uh, we, we continue to get them in on a daily basis. Uh, if you want to apply for an absentee ballot, the easiest way is to go to www.michigan.gov/vote. Uh, as long as you have either a Michigan driver's license or a Michigan identification card, uh, you can apply right online and, uh, get your application in. Uh, we will be sending out applications to people who have not applied, um, in a couple of weeks, once we get everything processed and have that list nailed down. Um, so, uh, you know, you, you can take a wait-and-see approach. Uh, again, a quarter of the voters have already requested a ballot, and those ballots will be mailed. Uh, if you've already requested it on September 24th, uh, with the exception of military overseas voters, those will be sent out a little bit earlier than that. Um, but there is still plenty of time. And remember, with Michigan's, uh, new constitutional amendment, you can register up to Election Day, so if you've moved, um, you can, the easiest way to update your address is michigan.gov/vote. Uh, you can register there, um, to update your address. And, uh, we'll continue to provide updates as, as we get closer and learn more. Um, and with that, uh, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone, uh, in our audience who has a community event, uh, we will give you a one minute to just give us the brief details, uh, time, place, and purpose of your event. And you would, uh, please raise your hand right now if you would like to do that.
And no, doesn't look like anybody.
No hands.
We had Loretta, but she changed her, right?
Okay, so that takes us to, um, registration for public comment on legislative matters, and legislative matters tonight, uh, does include everything on the agenda under, uh, resolutions for action, the consent agenda, and, uh, ordinance, the ordinance for introduction. Uh, it does also include the five public hearings, even though three of them will have to be repeated, uh, next week. Uh, the, those are eligible for, uh, comment, so please begin, um, raising your hand for public comment on legislative matters. And we will close that sign-in, um, after the first speaker finishes speaking. Um, and while people are getting their hands raised for that, um, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, I was muted. I'm still getting used to it. Uh, I'm not going to repeat, uh, the things that many people have said. Uh, I also am excited about the, the fire service program that we've been able to organize, uh, with the Lansing School District. That was a, a priority. Uh, I'm glad that we've been able to, to finalize that, so that's a, a big win for the city, um, as well as the district and our kids. Um, I want to thank everybody who's been, uh, helping out with some of our Walking Wednesdays. As we know, we're not really gathering as many people, but we are getting people together and, and reporting, and, and we've been in Southwest, um, with the, with the, uh, Southwest Action Group folks and Councilmember Hussein. We've been in, uh, we were over at Prospect Place, which was a lot of fun. Um, so we'll be doing a variety more of those, getting a lot of film, and then putting that out through city TV and pushing that out on social media to show off our city. Um, so while we can't do it necessarily as Walking Wednesdays, we can do it, um, on video and, and show it off on video. Um, I also want to thank everybody who helped out, participated with our concerts. Uh, that was actually pretty successful. Um, we were able to go to the final one, and people were, were distanced, and music was fantastic, and, and people really want to get out of their house, and we can utilize our parks for that. Um, so that's great. And finally, I want to mention, um, for those out there, uh, who have kids going back to school, um, the Lansing schools do have a variety of different partners, and I think there was an article in the State Journal over the weekend talking about those that, um, have places where their kids can go if, if parents are working and their kids need somewhere to go so they can do school online. Um, the city will be participating as part of that also. Um, we have some spots available still for Lansing residents. Um, so you can contact our Parks Department. Again, it's, it's distanced. It's, uh, an opportunity for kids to be somewhere and participate in school and for their parents to be able to go to work. Um, so, uh, you can get ahold of our Parks Department if you are in that situation where you want to or need to go back to work in person and have a child who's about to, um, start up with school and, um, and is not going to school as online learning, especially here in Lansing. Um, this is a good opportunity. So, uh, that's what I've got, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to public comment on, um, legislative matters, and then again, that includes the resolutions the council will be considering tonight as well as the ordinance for introduction, um, and the five public hearings that I'll briefly read into the record. Uh, number one, special assessment for snow and ice, uh, removal assessment of, uh, winter of 2019, 2020. Number two, special assessment for Glenburn Commons trash and grass abatement. Number three, an ordinance to eliminate the prohibition of street parking, uh, 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. Number four, an ordinance to eliminate the annual and temporary permits for overnight street parking, and number five, the ordinance, uh, to regulate on-street parking during snowy emergencies. I will indicate that we received, uh, it looks like five written communications regarding the two assessment hearings that we will, uh, make part of the public hearing record and share with the, uh, committee of jurisdiction on that. Um, and, Mr. President, I don't know if you wanted to have a council member give an overview of these hearings.
Yes, um, so the first one, um, Mr. Clerk, correct me, are we going to give the overview of the ones that are being canceled anyway, right?
Uh, it could be pretty brief, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Uh, councilmember Dunbar, if you could please, uh, start on number one.
Yes, Spatafor. Okay, so the, the two that are actually legit public hearings tonight, um, are the snow and ice removal assessment and the special assessment for Glenburn Commons. The snow and ice removal is the standard procedure. Anybody that, that had a citation and is challenging that has the ability to come down here and, um, come down here. Look what my brain is still in City Hall. Um, be, be part of this conversation here over Zoom, um, about their situation there. Um, and then the same thing with Glenburn Commons. We do that one every year. We have to certify a roll. Um, but Glenburn Commons is different. It's not a penalty assessment. It's a condominiumized, um, original plat that has a common space in the center that is not technically a city park and therefore not within our jurisdiction, but to aid the neighbors in mowing that space and keeping it clean, um, city staff or contractors do the work, and then we assess it back to the, um, households originally in that condominium plat. It's a 300 or so homes.
Okay, thank you. And then?
Can you speak to three, four, and five?
Yeah, just real quick, if you could just summarize where we are on that.
Okay, well, three, four, and five, anybody that, that, um, that saw or heard that we were having a public hearing tonight, you're obviously still welcome to speak. It wasn't noticed properly in time, so we're going to do it again officially in a week. Um, once we have public comment on, uh, these three related ordinance changes, which is eliminating the overnight street parking prohibition, um, getting rid of the parking permit that we instituted last year as a, as a, an attempt to, to deal with the overnight issues. And then the third one is regulating the snow emergencies because we have to have something in place that allows the, the snow plows to get through. Um, those will end up officially, their public hearings are next week, and then we'll take them up in committee, and they'll be back again, um, for final passage, I think, on September 21st, if I'm remembering correctly, about if, if we're ready to go. And that's it.
That's it. Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar.
And I do not see, oh, I do see hands, sorry. Uh, we have Loretta Stanaway followed by, uh, Jeffrey Brown. Uh, Loretta, you have, uh, three minutes. Uh, Mr. President, it's not giving me the option to let her speak.
All right, let me, I, there we go.
I think I'm live now, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, my comment is relating to the package of ordinances about parking, and I understand it's been delayed, uh, for action, but I'm wondering if you could consider, uh, a different alternative. First off, my preference would be to leave everything the way it is, but if that's not the decision of the council, I would recommend that one solution might be to require landlords to purchase enough parking permits as part of their licensing requirements when there is insufficient space on a property for the number of the tenants, or to consider going to something other cities have done, um, not certainly on a scale of New York City, but something along that line where landlords and homeowners purchase or rent parking spaces based on the number of residents. That's my suggestion.
Thank you. And next we have Dr. Jeffrey Brown, and then, uh, someone identified as Galaxy Notes.
Hello? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Um, I'm Jeffrey Brown, um, a member of the HRCS Board, Advisory Board, and, um, I wanted to, uh, make a comment about, um, some of the assignments, uh, appointments for the board. I'm so appreciative of the mayor's initiative to get community members involved and engaged, um, and really help build up some of these boards where we have a need. And so it's phenomenal that we're seeing a response, and as, uh, being on the HRCS Board, uh, over this last year, we have sometimes been challenged to meet quorum, uh, because of the amount of vacancies that we've had, as well as, you know, it's challenging to get people who want to, um, come onto a board where there's so much work to be done. You know, we have such great, um, new processes going in place and a lot of exciting activity, and I believe it's imperative that when individuals want to connect with us as a city and as a community, uh, have the opportunity to serve. And so I reviewed the information for, uh, Versay Williams as well as Jody Washington, and I was very excited to see the caliber of individuals who have, uh, a background in serving community and are individuals of the community, that we make sure that when people want an opportunity, that we're, you know, making it possible for them to serve. Uh, Versay having a background in, excuse me, in the community and working, um, with less fortunate, um, you know, has been the foundation of our HRCS Board and the programs that we have, uh, financially supported. And so someone, um, being on the, you know, in the community and fully connected to be able to have input and insight, I believe, is so imperative. Um, and I'm encouraging, um, you as the council and, and as the mayor to, you know, for that, that assignment, because I think that she would add great value, um, to everything that we're talking about and the systemic changes that we're looking to make. Additionally, we have Jody Washington, and, um, her being a former, um, city council, um, has a great background, you know, over the last, you know, 10 years or so of really working in the community, um, in every different area of, um, population that we're serving, I believe, and I know is a great asset, because we need, um, in our board, we need that continuous diversity and knowledge, um, in the board to make sure that we're supporting the city at large. And I think sometimes, you know, we have people who are in elected positions, and when they're no longer elected, they're not willing to serve, and I think that's a, a great disservice, but when we have an opportunity to have people who are willing to serve in a volunteer role, we need to take advantage of what they're willing to pour out, so that way, as a community, we can be a community of wholeness because we're having all the different perspectives, and everyone who has an asset to bring as far as human capital is able to bring it to the table and continue to have a voice. So I thank you so much, and I just encourage you all. I appreciate everything you're doing, and thank you, Mayor, for really responding to our call to, for the need for more people, uh, to serve on these boards and commissions. So thank you so much.
And thank you. And I do want to announce again that, uh, signup is now closed, um, for public comments. So we've got four people, uh, left that have signed down. Uh, Galaxy Notes, nine, followed by, uh, Edie Barnes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Peggy Brown, and it's showing up on my phone, Galaxy. But I'm, um, uh, asking you guys about the special assessment for the Glenburn Commons area. I've lived here in this area more than 20 years on Cortland Drive, and, um, we're assessed every year, and it says that it's not a bill. My concern with this is that we get this assessment, quote unquote, every year, and it's not a bill, but the city expects us to pay it, and we do. I have appealed this before in the past, and it has went on deaf ears. I feel that, uh, this is a blended community. We're, some are homeowners, some are renters, and I feel that this is unjust. We pay our taxes, our property taxes, summer and winter taxes, and yet we get an assessment, um, to pay this. Now, $53 may not seem like a lot, but we paid this down through the years, and it comes a time when you need to look at a different situation. What are the, our renters paying, the property owners? You know, so are we to pay the, for the whole thing? And, uh, each year you tell me this is not a bill, but yet, uh, we're assessed. And then the, uh, ultimate term is, we end up with the bill to pay this $53. We pay our property taxes winter and summer. I pay city taxes, um, and then still, I'm coming with another, quote unquote, assessment, which is basically another tax added to my property. I live on Cortland Drive. I, I have the worst street in this subdivision, the worst street. In 2016, um, Ballmore was paved. We had some gravel put out in front of our house, and time it rains, it washes away. So the street is bad, but yet we're assessed every year to pay $53 or more towards this, uh, beautification. How's this beautifying the neighborhood when, when you can't ride down the street without dodging potholes and stuff? So I just want to make my voice heard that this is not acceptable, um, service. I think you need to reassess that in that I'm not being serviced. I feel that I'm being asked to pay without no representation. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have, uh, Edie Barnes, and then Anthony Fields.
Uh, hey, everyone. Uh, I'm Edie. I'm, uh, just wanted to express gratitude for considering changing the, uh, 404 series parking bills. Uh, I, uh, normally I talk about a whole bunch of statistics and all those fun things, but like, I don't know, like over COVID, I worked, like I volunteered to help a lot of people sort of work through this, uh, whole bit, and I just, it's, it's that $10 a month. It, it's so much more. It's so much more than a lot of people think it is, or 125 bucks a year. Like, there were so many people that, like, just, they couldn't eat because they couldn't get the unemployment for, whatever stupid reason. There were people that were choosing between rent and food, people that couldn't change their kids' diapers for months on end, and, oh man, there was, there were families that literally couldn't feed their pets for this period of time, just because if you're going to choose between your kids and your pets, like what, what are you going to choose, right? I, it's just, I know, I'm super derailed right now, but I just, I appreciate you thinking about this and putting the time and effort to help out these people, because 25 bucks a night, just, it could, like for a ticket, it's, it's just an unexpected payment that some people can't afford to make, or even if it's the expected $10 payment, like there, people would be cutting things out of their lives for that, like more than some people can afford, especially right now, like really especially right now, because some people, it's just, they haven't gotten a chance to get back to work. I'm sorry, rambling. I, uh, super appreciate, uh, everything you guys did. Uh, thanks for my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, um, Anthony Fields, and then someone I identified as Propagandy.
Anthony. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I'm a property owner at, uh, 4307 Old Castle Circle, which is, um, right along the, uh, Glenburn area that we're discussing, and, um, uh, the previous owner dealt a lot with replacing the, um, uh, sump pumps because of the grading of the, the, that, that area in the middle, and the water runs straight down from there right to the property to where it burns out a lot of pumps. And, um, I had that area, um, along with the tenant, we had that area, uh, lasered, and it shows the, the elevation sloping right to the home itself, and so it's causing a lot of, um, pumps to burn out, and concerned about, um, foundation issues. A lot of the, uh, driveway and sidewalk area along the side of home where it runs to, it's actually cracking along with the neighbors. Um, it's like the water get, gets under there, and it's, it's actually causing a lot of problems with the water, uh, being sloped right towards the home set, um, right outside of that. Um, so I was hoping that something can be done with that, the sloping of the, uh, and the grading of that area and, and being redirected right to, um, the homeowners and, and causing a necessary, uh, cost. Um, you know, that's, that's, you know, a fix that could be done through the contractors, just, you know, preventing that from sloping to the homes itself. Um, so I've already had to replace, um, pumps already. Um, I've only owned that home probably about a year, year, probably a year and a half. I've only owned that home probably about a year, year, probably a year and a half. I'm sorry. And I've already replaced the pump and two, well, one pump I had to get repaired and then it burned out. And then I had to buy a whole brand new pump and that one, you know, was just working constantly. Whenever we have rain, you can't even go in the backyard because it's just standing water. You know, it's, it's, it's pretty horrible. And so I'm just kind of asking from some support on which way we can get this remedied. So it doesn't just eventually cause foundational issues to the home, which it's already causing problems to the driveway, sidewalk and everything else. So that's what I'm hoping to get some support and some direction on how this can be remedied. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker in this section is Propagandie. If you could identify yourself, please, and go ahead and start talking.
How's it going, y'all? I think that, so I want to say a couple of things. I think pretty much all you guys know who this is. Outside of that, I agree with Brandon Betts's proposal to change the parking on the streets. That's the need to hear in there. And anybody who's been affected by that knows that that was a great thing to bring forward. We appreciate you. And I think I remember that, I can't remember when they brought in to actually start charging people or letting them rent the space, but I could have swore it was when Propagandie came in. I don't know how that came about, but thank you for writing that wrong, Brandon. Outside of that, I think that it's important. I'll look at the people being appointed and Jody Washington being appointed to the, the human, human services. I just, I just don't know why we keep taking steps backwards. I know that somebody on here earlier said that it was important to have people who have been in the city and have worked in those positions to give and volunteer their time for free, but I don't believe so. I think that she was beaten out by, by Brandon Betts. That means the people didn't really want her in that position to be able to speak for anybody in that aspect. So I don't know, man, I just feel kind of, I feel kind of odd about that one. I don't have anything personal against her, but um, outside of that, I think that we need to stop allowing this dude, Propagandie, to continue to appoint anybody because everything will be marked. It would be marked in skepticism and in distrust, in my opinion. We still are not talking about the fact that Andy Shore admitted to racism within his department, within the fire department on audio, but continues to tell everybody in the world that all of us nine voices are lying. We're getting tired of that. You're ruining people's lives with that. Friends, family members have to wonder if they can trust our stories. You have to say and believe that you listen to black voices and you need to mean it. What are you going to do to right my life, Andy Shore? Michael Lynn, me, what are you going to do to right my life? Natasha Atkinson's life? What are you going to do about Bruce Odom, Chief Teleferro? We can't continue to allow you to appoint people when, when all of this comes out, everything that you've done for the last two, three years is going to be marked in skepticism. It's going to be tainted. It's going to smell like a litter box. What are you going to do? Are you willing today to admit that you know these problems were here and you flub them? Right these wrongs. People are hurting. I'm currently starving because of you. What are you going to do, Andy? Are you going to walk around the southwest end of the neighborhood, taking video and showing it to the world to make everybody think everything's okay? Is that your way of righting these wrongs, sir? We're not going to celebrate you anymore. LFD's program they put into Atlanta Scooters is not because of you. It's a lot of the reason apart because of me. Do right, man.
Okay, thank you. That was the end of our public comment. We are to the referral of the public hearings. Number one, the snow and ice assessment.
Public service.
Number two, the Glenburn Commons assessment.
Public service. Before we do that, Councilmember Dunbar, did you want to make a statement about this?
Yeah, I specifically wanted to address Anthony and the woman who spoke before. So depending on when you've moved into the Glenburg neighborhood and, and, and very likely nobody does this during their closing process, but you got to read your library papers. So I think the confusion that lies in this, in the comments that I heard folks believe that that is the city's responsibility, that that green space is somehow ours. So if you guys look at your deeds, you guys have ownership over that space. It's included. So all those houses out there in the Glenburn area were originally part of a condominium development, even though they're single family detached homes. It was meant to be condominiums. Now I can go into the sort of details of the treasurer running off with the president and the bag of money back in 1979 or whatever, whenever it happened. But the association that was originally governing the condos and the common spaces thereof sort of dissolved, but it still exists on paper. So anything that happens in that common area technically, like if there was an injury, if there was, you know, there's a lot of different things that could happen, but it is, it is technically owned by and the liability is carried by the residents in that area that were part of the original condo plat. Now, the grass, I understand the woman that said, you know, that $53 a year, it's another tax. You might not have known when you bought. I'm sorry that your realtor didn't point it out that, that you are part of a condominium organization without knowing it. If you're a renter, you might not know because your landlord is the one who owns the house. So I'm just, I wanted to explain that for folks who don't know the history behind that. And also Anthony, with regard to the slope, you know, if there was something that the city could do with the, with the slope, and I'm willing to look at that in public service if you, if you'd like to go there. But ultimately that cost would more than likely be assessed back to, and it would have to be agreed upon by all the people in that assessment district. Or at least the ones that would be benefited by changing the slope of that grass. And it's a little more more complicated than we think, but you guys are welcome to come to our public service meeting. I think the next one is August 31st at three, three o'clock before the meeting. So just please, you know, the more information we can give you, the better and we'll try to help. Thanks.
Thank you for that indulgence, Mr. Clerk.
Gladly. Number three, well, I guess we shouldn't refer these since that was not public hearing. So that takes us to the consent agenda.
All right, councilmembers. I already have been told that we will be pulling from the items, items three A and three B, the confirmations of DA Jones and Holly McDermott for members of the Police Board of Commissioners. Is there anything else that needs to come off the consent agenda? Councilmember Dunbar. Is that a residual hand raise or? You're muted, ma'am, councilmember.
I forgot to take it down.
Very good. Thank you. So Mr. Clerk, the revised, I'm sorry. Just got carried away there, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So that would leave on the consent agenda, item A, confirmation of appointment, sorry, one A, confirmation of appointment for Jeffrey Johnson as the regional business owner, representative member of the South MLK Junior Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority Board. That would be for a term to expire July 31st, 2021. One B is a confirmation of reappointment for Heather Gupel as an at-large member of the Historic District Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2023. Also a confirmation of appointment for Samantha Troutman as an at-large member of the Historic District Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2023. Under two A, we have a resolution for confirmation of appointment for basic, sorry, Versay Williams as a third ward member of the Human Relations and Community Services Board. That would be for a term to expire June 30th, 2023. We also have a resolution of confirmation of appointment for Josephine Washington as a first ward member of the Human Relations and Community Services Board. That would be for a term to expire June 30th, 2021. And from the Committee of the Whole, a resolution of confirmation of reappointment from Rodney Singleton, or for Rodney Singleton, sorry, as an at-large member of the Board of Fire Commissioners for a term to expire June 30th, 2024. And before moving the consent agenda, I do want to first acknowledge that under two B, the confirmation of appointment for Josephine Washington, we are related. Everybody knows that that is my mother. And what I would like very quickly is for the city attorney to opine whether or not me weighing in on that and voting on that constitute a conflict of interest.
James.
That charter provision doesn't read very well, but effectively if you're saying that you potentially have a conflict of interest, then that has to be voted on by six of the eight members under one of the sections. I mean, is that what you're saying? There's a potential conflict of interest?
I'm not, I'm asking you if, if a council member has a relative come up for an appointment by them voting on the issue, could that be considered? Is the, is the, the fact that we're relatives, is that a conflict of interest?
You have, you have disclosed the relationship. If you believe under the charter here that it's a conflict, then it's a six vote. If some other member raises the conflict of interest, then it's a majority of everybody except for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So with that being said, and not seeing further discussion, I would move the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. All those in favor, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Sane.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Eight years, zero days, the consent agenda is adopted. And that takes us to resolutions by the Committee on Public Safety for the two items that were removed from the consent agenda.
Sure. So first up, Councilmember Garza, if you'd like to speak to Mr. DA Jones. And well, before you do that, let me pull him in. I think I saw him on here as a participant and I'll do the same for Ms. McDermott. Just a moment. You know, we do this every week and still fall out of practice every so often. Before, while they're, while they're pulling themselves in though, I think Councilmember Dunbar would like me to correct the record that the Public Service Committee is actually tomorrow at 4:00 PM, not the 31st of August. It's tomorrow at 4:00 PM. So the invitation that she extended to, to residents to participate in that committee is four o'clock tomorrow.
We also have it next week. It's just that the, the hearing, I'm swatting a fly. But actually we're discussing the hearings for Glenburn and the snow assessment specifically tomorrow.
There you go. There you go. Thank you. Councilmember Garza, Mr. Chair, take it away.
All right. Thank you, Council President Spatafor. Good evening, Mr. Jones. Thanks you, thanks for joining us tonight. Evening. So what we have before us is a confirmation of appointment for DA Jones, at-large member of the Board of Police Commissioners for a term to expire June 30th, 2024. So we pulled you off the consent agenda because some colleagues of mine wanted to ask you some questions this evening and you will be up for vocal evening. So we had a pretty robust conversation. So I won't get into all the specifics. Says Mr. Jones has been here in City Lansing since 1983. He also sits as a board of trustees on the Capital Area District Library. So I guess, you know, I'm going to support you. I like the way that you answered. I'm just going to leave it up for discussion for the rest of council members. If anybody has any questions, Mr. Jones, appreciate you being here.
My pleasure.
So we'll open up for questions then. Councilmember Dunbar, you're up first.
Oh, I didn't realize my hand was still up from before. I'm going to let Councilmember Betts go first and then I will come in.
Mr. Councilmember Betts, sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar, and thank you, President Spatafor. I appreciate it. I have a series of a couple of questions here for you and I've written them down because I'll make sure that I will just, I, I just want to have a discussion about this because obviously important in this. So the, the first, I guess, to, to give you a little background on why I'm asking this question, in 2019, Lansing residents watched a video of police officers striking a black 16-year-old girl. In 2018, Officer Wrangle was fired from the department after using racial slurs. Do you believe that Lansing Police Department has problems with racist violence and discrimination?
Do I believe they have a problem with it?
Yes.
Let, let me first preface my answer by telling you this. You know, I, I haven't had inside knowledge of the inner workings of the Lansing Police Department. So my, my opinion is peripheral. So growing up in Lansing, I've dealt with some issues, you know, with the police department. But I, I do believe that the issues in Lansing are minimal in comparison to what happens throughout our country. And so, you know, with that, I don't believe there are barriers that we can't break down in terms of the issues that we do have in Lansing. But I can't speak to the severity of the issues, if that makes sense. So there, there, there are issues, you know, so. But again, I can't speak to the severity of those issues. I, I like the fact that the officer was fired in 2018. The issue of the young lady being struck was addressed. And so I believe that the officer involved was dealt with appropriately. So again, there are some issues, but again, like I said, I can't speak to the severity of those issues. But I'm definitely, definitely looking forward to finding out. So.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. My, my second question in response to the murder of George Floyd, obvious countless and other countless instances of police brutality. There's a movement in cities across the country, including Lansing, demanding that we radically rethink public safety. Think of this movement and the demands for major changes.
You say, what do I think of the movement, the demand for major changes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, as, as it relates to major changes, I, I think that changes need to be defined appropriately. You know, I, I don't think that I think that in some instances, people aren't defining what they want clearly. You know, and you, you know, a lot of people are using these token phrases, you know, for the, for the change if they want to see. But I don't think that you can make sweeping change with token phrases or without identifying specifically what those changes would look like and how it would affect our communities.
Thank you. Those are the two questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Betts. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next up, we have Councilmember Jackson with a few questions, it looks like.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, DA. How you doing?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good. Nice to see you again. Did you get that seawall finished you were working on?
I did, I did. Now it's under observation.
Hopefully all by code and everything.
Well, I made repairs. It was already there. I just repaired some stuff on my own. So.
Just so everybody knows, he's talking about his, his property. I just see him working out there really hard. So I was there for the Committee, Public Safety, where we talked about all the questions. Can you highlight some of the things you talked about as far as how you, how you see transparency and the role it plays in the complaint process and kind of what you would want to see if you can make it happen?
Well, I mean, in a nutshell, I believe transparency is important, you know, so I, I don't know that, that I can highlight, you know, our conversation. But, you know, again, when, when, when it comes to transparency, I know we, we talked about, you know, internal affairs during an investigation. We talked about the Board of Police Commissioners had an authority to review those investigations as it relates to the decisions and how they would decay findings work. And I, I believe again, that transparency is extremely important, you know, for the community so that they know that things are being handled properly. So again, if, if there is no transparency, then steps will need to be taken place to make sure that it exists.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have two more folks with their hands up. Councilmember Dunbar and Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Dunbar. Kathy, you're muted.
I apologize. I thought I hit that.
Again.
Thanks, Patricia.
Make me separate you two.
Okay. I would like to ask Mr. Jones, since you've not, you don't know of any.
Say that again. I don't know.
You don't know or you haven't had any issues with the police department here as far as racism, discrimination.
Oh, I've, I've had, I've had some issues, you know, I've, I've had personal things that I just don't want to discuss on here. But that's why I say I know that there are some issues that do exist, but it does, it, it is not as severe as what I've seen throughout the country. That, that's what I was saying.
Okay. So in your assessment, what, what you've gone through is not as bad as what happened.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying the magnitude, what, what we deal with here, we have we have issues here, but there are places throughout our country that do it a lot more.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, how, how do you see your role as a police commissioner? What have you learned from like reading the charter as to what your responsibilities would be as a commissioner?
Well, um, what I know thus far is, is one of the major roles is, is in the hiring procedures in terms of who's hired, uh, and placement. But then also looking at policy procedure, uh, looking at training as relates to human resources, the training with implicit bias, use of force, things of that nature. So, uh, again, also with, um, issues that arise with complaints, you know, dealing with, uh, looking at complaints and making sure those things are handled properly. So, um, I mean, the road is broad from what I've seen. And so, um, there, there's a lot to do. I think there are some things that may need to be changed, but again, before getting in and seeing how things work, I don't want to make any any comments on what I would actually do until I truly learn, you know, how things are and what's going on, so.
Okay, um, that's fair because you have to get in there. What, um, what do you thi, how would you think you would react if citizen complaints came before you with, um, accusations of racism or discrimination, um, or use of force or anything like that? Do you envision yourself having the, um, having the stamina to bring that forward if needed? How would, how do you think you would deal with that?
So, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and make one thing clear. You know, I, I didn't want to get into this on, on this call, but I'm a black man in the United States of America, okay? So to make a comment to me about racism, I mean, I know that exists. So if somebody brings that to my attention, I can't look at that with deaf ears and act like it doesn't exist if this situation occurred. So it would definitely need to be handled properly to make sure, you know, what happened. But, but things like that happen. I mean, this happened to me. I've been racially profiled in a, in a former career. So, I mean, in, in my former career, I was stopped three weeks in a row, twice by the same police officer, and then once by a different police officer on the same street corner on my way to one of the locations that I managed. And so, and this was in the state of Michigan. You know, I won't divorce the city, but it happened, and I fought the tickets. And even when I went to fight the ticket, I was treated unfairly in that process. So, um, I know that it exists, and if complaints come about, we'll find out if they're true and handle them as necessary.
Okay. And then my last question was, um, you said, you know, change isn't going to happen by token phrases. Um, I'm assuming that you're, you're referring to the defund.
Correct.
Police term.
Correct.
Which is, you'll notice it's, it's, um, you know, there's a lot of people that have a lot of different ideas about what that means, but it's not, it's not a closing down the police department. It's reallocating and prioritizing call.
Right.
So, understanding that, um, when you say change isn't going to come from a phrase, what would you suggest was done to back up that phrase for the change that's meaningful to those who are asking for it?
For the, to me, for the change that's meaningful is specifically defining what it is and how it will, will take place. But then also with the reallocation, where will this money go and where will this change happen?
Yeah, I'm good for now. I'm going to let, um, Councilmember Spitzley.
I think we're going to move on after Councilmember Spitzley, so if you're done, you're not done.
No, I, I'm good. I'm good.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for serving. I really appreciate it. Thank you for your comments. Um, they are very honest and very direct. I think that too many times, um, people, um, forget other people's life experiences. And, um, you know, we've all, well, not we all, but I think that, you know, black and brown people, I think there's not one person that doesn't have a story to tell. And so I appreciate your tact and, but I also appreciate your honesty. One of the things that concerns me, um, is, and I wanted to ask you about is, right now, the police commissioners meetings are on the second floor of the police department, and they, and they pretty much effectively prevent, you know, a lot of public input and a lot of public insight in what goes on. Um, and so as you talk about transparency, um, you know, I, I would like to hear, um, and I'm just going to be blunt, I would like to hear from you that, again, that is important to you and that, you know, you are going to work with the other commissioners to kind of bring the, the board out into the public so that the public can have an opportunity to shed some light to have, you know, to have a view in what's going on, because I think that once you do that, that kind of takes away the specter or the, the magic of what goes on, and it brings it, you know, so that people can have, um, an honest input in what's, what, you know, and what, what the dealings are. And so, um, I, I'm hoping that you will be part of that, that demands and moves to push the commission out into the open. Um, I appreciate your life experiences. I think you'll be great, um, on the commission. I hope that you're as honest and are you seeing, I, I think you will be as honest on the commission as you were with us. I like your forthrightness, and so I'm, I'm excited to see you on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Garza, would you care to make the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, confirm the appointment of DA Jones, at-large member of the Board of Police Commissioners for a term to expire of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, I don't see any further discussion. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
On the appointment of, uh, Mr. Jones, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
We're good. Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the resolution is adopted, and that takes us to the, uh, confirmation of Holly McDermott to the board.
Before we do that, Mr. Jones, I just want to let you know, um, thank you for your, I want to thank you for your willingness to serve the city. But also, um, you may make an appointment with the clerk to be sworn in for your role on the Police Board of Commissioners, and, uh, thank you very much for spending some time with us and for answering our questions. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, now, we, now we'll move on to, um, Councilmember Garza. Uh, Ms. McDermott is, uh, Holly McDermott is on as a participant, so she, we're all set.
Great. Uh, can you hear us? Holly, uh, you are on mute as of right now?
She's, Holly is there? Let me just ask. There we go.
Okay, okay, now can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Holly. Okay, so what we have bef, who we have before us is Holly McDermott. She's a first ward member of the, uh, possibly about to be appointed as a first ward member of the Police Board of Commissioners, uh, term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, she was vetted through the mayor's office as well as Mr. Jones. We also had a pretty robust, uh, conversation, uh, on the thirteenth of, I believe it was the thirteenth, for our last, uh, Public Safety Committee meeting. And I'm looking through my notes here. I just put them away, so I'm sorry. So she has a, so Ms. Ms. McDermott has a criminal justice and master, uh, and a masters in criminal justice administration. So a bachelor's in criminal justice and a masters in criminal justice administration. Notice she wants to, uh, take that and be a better representation for our community. So I am also, uh, I was also impressed with the comments made at our last Public Safety Committee meeting, and I will be supporting you as well this evening. Uh, so I guess we'll leave that up to the rest of the council members for discussion. So I guess, anybody has any questions, Peter, Mr. Spatafor?
Thank you, uh, Councilmember. Um, looks like we're starting with Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, and Holly, thank you for being here and for being willing to serve, obviously, your awards, so. From my side of town here. Um, you know, I, I really appreciate your, your educational background and all of that. I especially appreciate, uh, I was reading this application for the correction advisory board, and it looks like you're very interested in revisi, recidivism and things like that, which is obviously very important. And the police commissioners will, you, you'll be able to address a lot of things like this, too. Um, I'm going to ask you the same questions, uh, that I asked before, because I, I think that we should be asking this of every police commissioner. Um, the first is, do you believe that the Lansing Police Department has problems with racist, uh, racial violence and discrimination?
Um, I do. Um, I think we do have some issues. Um, I, again, echo what was said earlier. I don't know if there to the severity of other areas in the country, but we do have issues, especially as the two you noted in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, those were unacceptable. So each case, as they come along, we definitely need to look into them and research them and see why they're happening. What is the root cause? Is it training? Is it education? Is it bias? Like, what are the actual root causes so we can fix these problems before they escalate any worse?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And then my, my other question, of course, you know, there's a, there's a movement right now demanding that we rethink public safety. What do you think about the movement and, and the demands for major changes?
So I think the movement definitely has some good points to it. Um, I do think you need to take a look at, um, how we're spending that money. Is it the best way that to serve our community? If it is, awesome. If not, then we need to look at better ways to, um, serve our community. Councilwoman Dunbar had mentioned, um, some of the radical changes, and one of the examples that Lansing Police Department has put in is when they hired Jan, the social worker. That was an excellent way to reallocate those sources, because the LPD, they get a lot of mental health calls. So is, is it in their best interest to be going to all these mental health calls, or should we be sending in a social worker once it's safe? You know, they have the education, the background, so I think that's just one good example of not quote unquote, defunding the police, but just reallocating the funds so our community as a whole is served better.
Thank you, Holly. I really appreciate that, and you answered them steadily. I'm looking forward to supporting you at this appointment.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. McDermott. Uh, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I think some of my questions were answered, but I will ask the same question I asked before, which is, when, when you hear of citizen complaints, if they were to come to you as a commissioner, do you see yourself taking a role in making sure that they're seen actively through the entire complaint process, the resolution?
Yes, I do, and I think we need to be transparent in that process. Um, of course, we need to take in the consideration of privacy and safety of those involved. But I think we need to be transparent in the entire process. I think a lot of the anger comes from people either not being heard or feeling that they're not being heard. So if we can help them along the way to understand, yes, we're looking into it, yes, it's complex, but here's what we're doing in the process as we come up with a solution. And then once we come up with a solution, we can move on from there.
Okay. And do you have the gumption to be able to stand up for it if needed? Because that's really an important thing, is when you see a need for change to not, even if you're the lone wolf, like to be able to stand up and, and, and say we need to fix something.
Yes, um, I, in my current job, I'm an analyst, so I am that one person that looks at the data, and they're like, well, we've always done it this way. I'm like, yeah, but that way's not working. So sometimes it takes a while, but I'm definitely the one, look, follow the data, look at the numbers. You know, it's not, well, I feel this way, so it should be this way. No, that way's not always working, so let's figure out a better way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Um, and then Councilmember Hussein.
I'll be brief, and this is, you know, really to, uh, Mr. Jones, uh, as well as Ms. McDermott. I just, uh, appreciate, I think, the, the energy, uh, the fresh ideas and perspectives. Um, I think, um, what was articulated tonight was really a willingness to take on, uh, some uncomfortable issues, um, that are going to need to be taken out within our department to really move our department forward to make sure that our public safety responds to the best it possibly can before, uh, city residents. That being said, uh, we also have longtime members, one we actually just, um, reappointed a, a few weeks back, uh, and they have, I think, valuable experience and knowledge, but um, they've also made some, um, some promises, uh, to, to city council and to the city residents, such as getting out of, uh, City Hall and really taking that show on the road so that you guys are meeting people where they're at. And so, um, I would just, uh, encourage you to work with those folks that have been on the, the board and commission for quite some time, um, and, uh, and, and to very gratefully, um, you know, nudge them into fulfilling some of those promises, um, because I think it's imperative that, um, the, you know, the city's residents, uh, more than anyone else, uh, any other stakeholder, really gets to, uh, engage in some measure of transparency with that apartment moving forward. But again, I really appreciate, uh, Mr. Jones, and I really appreciate Ms. McDermott and the willingness to serve in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein, or Vice President Hussein. By the end of this year, I'll get used to Vice President, and then we'll switch it around. All right, uh, Ms. McDermott, I really appreciate you being here. Um, we, we have yet to vote on this, but, uh, thank you for your time. When this passes, or if this passes, as I told Mr. Jones, um, please make an appointment with Clerk Swop and, uh, take, take your oath of office, and then we look forward to seeing, seeing you in action on the Police Board of Commissioners. Thank you for your time. Councilman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, with that, I'd like to move the resolution of confirmation of appointment. Mrs. Holly McDermott is the first ward member of the Police Board of Commissioners for a term to expire of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
The motion has been made. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk could please call the roll.
On the confirmation, Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the resolution is adopted, uh, which takes us to, uh, the resolution by President Spatafor regarding the state of emergency.
All right, here we go again, folks. Um, so the state of emergency, uh, declaration, as you know, the mayor made a bunch of days ago, like March sixteenth, I think it was, and, um, this is just another extension of that through September twenty-second, which is the day after our next, our last council meeting in September. Again, the mayor may, um, rescind this declaration of emergency before the expiration of this resolution, should he deem it necessary to do so. And I was asked a question today, too, about sort of what the emergency actually means, and, uh, maybe I'll talk about that for just a minute. It really, it doesn't say that we're under constant threat or things like that, but what it does is allow the mayor, um, certain powers, um, through his office and through grant, granted, depending to charter and ordinance, as it relates to city staffing, declarations of, uh, shelter in place, uh, type things, uh, potentially, uh, a mask mandate, a lot of just permissive powers that if the, if the mayor needs to make decisions, uh, in the absence of a special city council meeting, those, those types of administrative decisions can be made and, and activated under, under the charter. So it's, I'm sorry, under the ordinance. So, um, not a lot of like, does it mean a lot necessarily from what's happening perspective, but it grants the mayor so, some of those emergency powers, and it also allows us to recuperate some expenditures under FEMA dollars, or in this case, COVID dollars, as we incur costs related to the ongoing pandemic. So just to maybe mention that a little bit, so you all have a little bit of background there. I know we all know, but there's folks watching at home who've asked questions, so I wanted to make sure it was clear that this doesn't mean that, you know, we're all at risk of getting COVID today, but just that there's a, uh, an emergency that does exist that may necessitate the use of some of those emergency powers, and we're granting the mayor that ability to use those emergency powers beyond the original, uh, declaration. Uh, Councilmember Spitzley. And I would move the resolution. I'm sorry. I'll move the resolution. Adam, you have the, you have the gavel.
All right, let me pull up, hold on one second. Okay, thank you. All right, so the, uh, motion has been made. Uh, Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Vice President. When we did the brown bag, I think it was last week, um, I think, I think it was you, Carol, you asked if the mayor could give an overview of what his, um, thoughts are on opening, opening City Hall, and I was wondering if the mayor could just give a brief response on, you know, what his thoughts are, plans on reopening City Hall, please. Yeah, they got to unmute you. I don't know what's going on there.
I got it. I got it this time. Uh, sure, um, you know, we're, we're keeping track of the numbers. We're staying in contact with the governor's office as best we can. Not a lot has, has changed. I think we are flattening the curve, but, um, you know, there are concerns about, uh, MSU students coming back to, uh, to East Lansing and to the east side of Lansing. Um, there'll certainly be less now that MSU has, has asked them not to. Um, there'll certainly be less now that MSU has has asked them not to return, that there will be students that come back. Um, there are still significant questions that that I'd like to see answered before we have public returning into our buildings. We do have people working in uh most of our buildings and um we've got um remote work plans and things with our employees, department by department. But in terms of bringing the public back, um, you know, Nick Tate has been working on our return to work plans. And he continues to update them along with CDC requirements and guidelines, uh, not requirements, but guidelines. Um, we continue to be in contact with the Ingham County uh Health Director with Linda Vale, uh, as well as um the governor's office. So, you know, right now, we we look at it pretty much at the end of each month. Um, I'm always hopeful in the beginning of the month that we'll be in open, uh, able to open at the end of the month or early the next month. Um, I said we'd look at the end of August and we'll continue to look at the numbers this this week. But I am not optimistic that we're going to be opening the building for the public after Labor Day. Um, I do think it's going to go at least through the end of September, and then we'll review at the end of September into October. But um, you know, the guy, that could all change. The governor could put us into phase five tomorrow and say the numbers are really low, and that could all change. Um, but at this point, we're going to do what's best to ensure that our employees are safe, that we don't have people uh roaming through the buildings that potentially be infected. We do have significant safety protocol calls in place right now, but um, you know, we'll keep an eye on the numbers. But at this point, I'm not optimistic that we'll be opening to the public um after Labor Day. But we'll continue to to keep an eye out and possibly, you know, mid, late September, early October. But it just depends on on uh how the numbers look and how we can ensure that we're keeping uh our employees and and people that will be coming into the building safe.
Thanks.
We, we appreciate that, Mayor Shaw. Councilwoman Spitzley, does that answer your question? Yes. All right. So there is a motion on the table for the discussion. Seeing none, Clerk Swop, uh, could you please call the roll?
On the emergency extension, Councilmember Bets?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the resolution is adopted. We are to the Committee on General Services for Community Funding for Against All Odds.
Uh, Vice President Hussein?
Sure. So the applicant in this case is somebody that's familiar to all of us, Shirley Carter Powell. Uh, she is the president of Against All Odds, sorry. Uh, when they came to General Services, they'd originally requested $500. And we'll discuss that in a in a moment. Uh, and this is for a back to school, homeschool kind of drive through festival. Uh, this is to take place August 29th from two to five, and the event will take place at Francis Park. Uh, items to be distributed as part of this uh festival include backpacks, pencils, uh, two pocket folders, pens, uh, block erasers, uh, and the and the like. Due to the city uh not really uh being able to support similar events that, you know, maybe we've supported in the past uh when we were, you know, in the midst of a global pandemic, um, this group really wanted to kind of fill the gap, fill the need. Um, but while also obviously ensuring safety uh during this COVID-19 pandemic. So to that, to that end, they have planned for uh security at the entrance. Um, they're going to actually be distributing plaques um to pre-registered individuals upon arrival. Um, that will indicate the number of bags um that they received, the group number based on age, uh, because, you know, everything is going to be obviously age specific. Uh, pre-registration is required uh for this particular event. Uh, any one interested in registering, um, my understanding is there's still um um some space, if you will, uh, can call 303, I should say 517-303-1817. Uh, the requested funds do come from the city council's uh um community promotion account. Uh, and will be used to defray uh costs for, my understanding, facilities rental, uh tents, chairs, backpacks, supplies and the like. Um, and again, back to the original request of $500, uh, although that was the original request, uh, Councilwoman Wood is part of our General Service Committee. Um, I think, you know, considering the financial need of the applicant, I think the value obviously of the festival. Um, and the fact that we are already, um, you know, so many of the things that we fund happen, uh, you know, toward the middle and and end of the summer, maybe even early uh end of the fall. But so many of the groups that typically um apply for this funding, such as the Lansing Harmony Celebration and the Colonial Village Neighbor Association, you know, and so on. Um, they simply are not uh engaging in the events that they typically um do. So with that being said, I am considering the balance that we have in that particular account. Uh, Councilwoman Wood actually made a motion as part of the General Services Committee um to move forward with uh the allocation of $1,000 uh to this particular applicant. And so with that being said, um, I would move a uh resolution to support in the amount of $1,000 from our city council community uh uh promotion account. Um, and this would be for Against All Odds and the Back to School Homeschool Drive Through Festival.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Councilmember Spitzley, is your hand up still or just residual? Okay, very good. Seeing no further discussion, then, um, Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll on the $1,000 uh grant?
On the grant, Councilmember Bets?
He said yes.
Uh, Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Hey, A A zero N A's, the resolution is adopted. We are to the Committee of the Hole for the fireworks display license.
Mr. Vice President?
Sure. So we actually took this up in uh Committee of the Hole. We had the applicant on hand, uh, who in this case is Melrose Pyrotechnics. Uh, this license would be to allow for uh the applicant to display and discharge fireworks uh at Cooley Law School Stadium, uh, which is located at 505 East Michigan Avenue on August 28th, August 29th. Um, and it would also provide for the opportunity on September 18th and September 19th, although they don't know if they're actually going to display and discharge fireworks on those two dates. In any event, um, what they're looking to do uh is to reactivate that space in some, in some manner. Um, and so what they're looking to do is actually have uh movie nights at the stadium uh and then out beyond second base in the outfield after the movie uh has wrapped. And after after they've been able to kind of move the public into a safe space uh to actually have uh firework uh displays. Uh, and so in any event, in this case, we did take a look. Uh, the applicant has paid all fees. They've acquired the necessary insurance uh policy, which the city is co-insured, uh, and have been vetted by the Treasury Department and found not to be in default um to the city. So uh, that being said, there was some discussion in Committee of the Hole uh pertaining to the safety um of of moving forward with this type of event. Um, and they they did discuss limitations on attendance uh and other, uh, you know, requirements, um, I would assume masks and uh things of that nature. Uh, and then there was also some discussion about uh the fact that we just went through uh one of the most disruptive uh Fourth of July holidays. Um, and but the conversation really kind of centered on the fact that this is very controlled. It's a professional, uh, you know, obviously, um, uh, display in a um controlled setting. Uh, and it's for, you know, 15 to 20 minutes at a time and uh, you know, and it's not going into uh the wee hours of the morning. So uh, that being said, uh, President Spatafor, I'd move the resolution.
Thank you, sir. We have a resolution before us. Is there any further discussion on this? Uh, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you. I'll be brief. So I'm leaning away from supporting this for the two reasons. One is because during the pandemic, you know, I would just generally discourage gatherings, even though it is outside. And I know precautions are in place, but just general discour- um, dissuade right there. Also is because the fireworks, although these would be permitted, they still bother people. It's the loud noise that people complain about with the people that have PTSD and the animals. I don't think that the noise discriminates whether it's permitted or not. So just during COVID-19, I just won't be supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see no other hands. Um, so why don't you call the roll, Mr. Clerk?
Okay, on adoption of the fireworks resolution, Councilmember Bets?
No.
Was that a no?
It was a no, right? Why don't you say it again?
Yeah, that is, that is a no, correct.
Thank you. Council, Councilmember Dunbar?
Um, yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
No.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Six A zero N A's, the resolution is adopted, and that takes us to the uh Montgomery Drain Public Improvement.
Uh, Mr. Vice President?
Sure. So uh, this pertains obviously to the Montgomery Drain Project. We've had many discussions pertaining to this. We um had a lengthy conversation uh as part of Committee of the Hole earlier this evening. Uh, we, you know, know that the Montgomery Drain Board, as well as Drain Commissioner, is full steam ahead uh on this project. Ultimately, uh, some 64% of the cost of the project will be the responsibility in the city of Lansing. Um, the, we were told that the mayor did, in fact, uh, as promised, to engage the aforementioned, uh, being the Drainage Board, as well as the Commissioner, uh, to see if we could, you know, pump the brakes just a little bit, uh, to uh gather additional information, maybe solicit additional bids, um, work to reduce reduce costs, uh, and then things of that nature. Um, our understanding is that some cost reductions have occurred, uh, but that board and the commissioner are full steam ahead. Um, and, you know, per state statute in terms of drain code, um, they they have pretty broad power and and can pretty much in these uh situations do what they want. Uh, so if we don't do anything, uh, when billed, uh, the city will be on the hook for these costs. So we've looked at myriad ways uh to pay the bill and when the bill comes due. Ultimately, as part of the budget process, we did decide that uh we could move forward with a uh 50-50 split, uh, which would mean 50% of the costs being paid by um drain code tax. Um, uh, that would be levied on all property owners within the city of Lansing, and 50% of the costs being paid uh by a special uh assessment that would be levied on the benefited um uh property owners. Uh, that said, to move forward on the special assessment, uh, we have to engage in what's called a public improvement process uh where the Public Service Department uh puts together plans and specifications uh regarding the assessment, works with the assessor's office to determine the assessment role and the properties that would be part part of that role. Um, and we then have to um have a public hearing as part of Phase Three uh before moving forward. From the Committee of the Hole conversation, um, it became very clear. We all believe the uh residents that will be um on the hook for the special assessment deserve and desire um additional engagement before we move forward uh with a public hearing and future vote on the role. That said, um, I think there was a little bit of confusion to in terms of what we were doing tonight. Um, what we are doing is simply uh moving forward with the first two phases of the public improvement process, which uh would authorize, as in uh the title of the resu- resolution, it would authorize the preparation of the um special assessment role uh for the Montgomery Drainage um improvement, so that we can engage in a meaningful uh way before moving forward with the public hearing and ultimately, uh, you know, some decision by this body. So uh, that being said, I would move the resolution to approve uh Phases One and Two.
Okay, so we have the motion there before us. Um, is there further discussion on this? I know we talked a lot about in Committee of the Hole, uh, the possible, you know, next couple steps and um, but if there's any further discussion needs to be had, please raise your hands. Otherwise, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bets?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
A A zero N A's, that uh resolution is adopted, and that takes us to the uh setting of a uh reset of the public hearing for the uh street parking ordinance.
Yes, um, Councilmember Dunbar.
Okay, so this is basically going through the same process again. Um, all three related. Um, the first one is to consider an ordinance to eliminate the prohibition of street parking from two to five AM. And this public hearing is set for next Monday, um, which will be adequately uh noticed. And then it, the comments will come back to council or to the Public Service Committee after that, which, what did we say? September 14th and then um the 21st, it'll be out for consideration on the floor if all goes well.
Hey, um, would you like to make the res- the motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Thank you. Resolution setting the public hearing for um 31st on item C is before us. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bets?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
No.
Seven A's, one A, the resolution is adopted. The next is the uh elimination of the overnight, uh, the permits for overnight.
Councilmember Dunbar, you're next.
Same thing again. Um, public hearing, same date, uh, next Monday. In order to make this go into effect, we have to repeal the ordinance that we established with the temporary permits. And for those who are watching now but didn't see my comments during Committee of the Hole, um, part of the consideration on this, if you have bought a permit in the last, since it began, um, we have asked for a list of who's got the permits, when they were purchased, how much time is left on them, and how we can prorate that back um to whoever purchased them. So I move the setting of the public hearing.
Very good. Motion has been made. Mr. Clerk, please call. Well, I better make sure. No discussion, no discussion. Okay, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Uh, Councilmember Bets?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
No.
Seven A's, one A, the resolution is adopted. The um snow emergency ordinance.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. Bless you, Adam. Um, so this is another public hearing, same same day. This is because we need to have some way of controlling uh access on the streets during plowing um snow emergencies, et cetera. So we're also having a public hearing on that, and I move it.
And adequately moved, and I do not see any discussion. Therefore, I now ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bets?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yeah.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
No.
Seven A's, one A, the resolution is adopted.
Anybody remember when we used to be able to vote by just all saying? So the good old days.
Good old days. Uh, we are to ordinances for introduction. Uh, the Committee of the Hole introduced, uh, it's from the Committee of the Hole. Councilmember Spatafor introduced an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to amend Chapter 890 of the Lansing Codified Ordinances by amending section 890.01 to reform guidelines for poverty exemptions for real property and to remove true cash value of a principal residence as a criteria for eligibility consistent with state law. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee of the Hole.
Mr. Vice President, I'm gonna throw you the gavel here.
Okay, uh, President Spatafor, go ahead.
Yeah, so this is a resolution or an ordinance change that's being necessitated by, um, just trying to bring our practice in line with what is actually state law. Um, so, well, our practice is in line with state law. Our ordinance is not in line with our practice as it relates to uh treating this income as income. So basically, it's cleaning up the the ordinances here to make sure that we align with our current practice and what is allowed under state law. Um, we talked a little bit about this in Committee of the Hole, but it it shouldn't have much effect on the city because it's already what we're doing, just not um not written down as such. So um, I would move the resolution. Or I'm sorry, move the ordinance.
And so, and so the, um, if I'm correct, the resolution would actually set a uh public hearing for, is it September 14th?
Yeah, September 14th at 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM. Okay, be as soon. All right, there is a uh proper motion on the table for the discussion. Seeing none, uh, Clerk Swop, would you please call the roll?
On starting the hearing, Councilmember Bets?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
A A zero N A's, the uh public hearing is set for September 14th. Eight yes, zero nays. The public hearing is set for September 14th. And that takes us to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. So if you want to address City Council tonight, you can go ahead and start raising your hand if you're a member of the public. We will close that signup period after the first speaker finishes speaking. And in the meantime, we're to reports of city officers, boards, and commissioners.
Mr. Vice President.
I would move that all items be considered as read and full, and that the appropriate referrals be made by you, President Spatafor.
Thank you. That's proper motion. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
He said yes, but.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero nays. The referrals are allowed. We have letters from the city clerk, notice of placing on file of the Public Act 425 amendments with Delta Township.
Committee of the Whole and place on file.
Board of Public Service Resolution on Budget Policies and Priorities.
Committee on Public Service.
Letters from the mayor regarding plan acceptance for the pavement asset management plan.
Committee on Public Services.
Noise special permit for the Willard Avenue Pump Station project.
Committee on General Services.
Grant acceptance, economic, the Lansing Economic Development Corporation grant for economic recovery resource developer position.
Committee on Ways and Means.
Traffic Control Order 20-07, stop signs at High Street and Cesari Chavez Avenue.
Committee on Public Service.
Public Act 425 Agreement Renewal with Delta Township for Android Industries Property.
The Committee of the Whole.
Public Act 425 Agreement Renewal with Delta Township for Bridgewater Interiors LLC Property.
Committee of the Whole.
And Public Act 425 Agreement with Delta Township for Stir Lansing LLC Property.
Also the Committee of the Whole.
We have grant acceptance, Department of Treasury First Responder Hazard Paid Premiums.
The Committee on Ways and Means.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Do we have any council members wishing to make some closing statements this evening? All right. I will just note, we mentioned, I heard mentioned a couple times, our social worker for the Department of Police, Lansing Police Department. Actually, I'm very grateful that Ms. Bidwell and I will be meeting up tomorrow, and I'll be going on a ride along with her to sort of experience that. I know Councilmember Hussein has done it, and he highly recommended it, so I'm going to take that opportunity tomorrow. I've done it with law enforcement before, but never with our social workers, so I want to get a better understanding of that position and the necessity to probably add several, several more, but would like to just make that known. So I'll report back on that at our next, next meeting. Councilmember Garza.
Great. Thank you, Council President Spatafor. I just wanted to make a comment, because I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to make it next meeting for the City Council meeting, as right now I will be, but just in case I can't. The 2:00 to 5:00 ordinance that's up for public discussion, I just want folks to know that we did vet this about two years ago, year and a half ago. We went to every ward, had, had robust conversations with all the different residents. And from, from my opinion, and I think from the rest of public safety, that was, that was on the committee with me. The general consensus is they wanted to see that ordinance. It's not a new ordinance. It's been on the books for quite some time, and they wanted to see it in place and enforced. So I'm obviously open to more discussion on this topic, but I just wanted to let you know in case I wasn't able to be there, that we have had this, and it was vetted through public safety, and we did do a pretty good job going from ward to ward to have our public input. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garza. Mr. Clerk, we are now on to remarks by the mayor, or, I'm sorry, it's your job.
Go right ahead.
Remarks by the mayor or the executive assistant, Mr. Mayor? Nothing? Very good.
All right, then we are to public comments on city government-related matters. Speakers have up to three minutes. So again, you need, do need to raise your hand. I only see one hand raised, so by the time we finish with the first speaker, if you don't have your hand up, we will be done. So our first speaker is Nathan Hartley, followed by a 918 phone number. So again, you have the next couple of minutes to raise your hand. Mr. Hartley.
Hi there. Yes, I live in the Glimber neighborhood, and I just wanted to thank the city for acting as the billing agent for our area in order to get that lawn mowed for us. We could barely get six people at a neighborhood meeting, so it would be difficult to get it mowed any other way. So thank you all.
All right, thank you. Next, we have phone number. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lonnie F. Gilmore, and been in the city for the 10 years in February. Thank you for this opportunity. Well, since I cannot ask you and get a response, because that's not the way it's set up, I will just make my recommendation without knowing if these supports exist or if they're being sought. But I would definitely like to recommend that the mayor's office and all other offices they're in, the city council, and definitely every boarding commission, that you seek or provide support for the difficult and critical conversations that are coming up for all of us as the city works to address systemic racism. These conversations are both necessarily difficult and obviously critical. What inspired me was, it seemed evident that Mr. Jones, in not being able to expect or anticipate the line of questioning, he seemed to feel exposed and felt compelled to share a personal story. And just as a general, you know, piece of advice, again, as we're all getting involved in these conversations, some of us for the first time, is that while stories are really, really, really critical, and they are great to have, Black Indigenous people and other people of color should not be compelled to tell their personal stories in order to participate in the work to pursue racial justice. I am not saying that anyone compelled anyone intentionally. I am sharing with you that that's often how we feel. We feel compelled. And so I just wanted to offer that with hope that the city will seek support for, at all of these tables that are going to be endeavoring to talk about racial justice and to pursue it hopefully with all due speed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And our final speaker this evening is Michael Lynn.
Well, now you know that they named Michael Lynn. It says propaganda right up there. Aside from that, we're going to talk about some of these quoted words that Mayor Shore used back in 2019. If I said that there are no racial issues within the fire department, it may have been something that I said earlier on, because there are. I know there are. I've had folks talk to me. Short can be telling Odom, there definitely are. I know there have been in the past. I'm the one who's responsible for the city, and for me, I believe that, and I believe, and I believe you, while speaking to David Odom. I believe that this is what you faced, and I will apologize on behalf of the city to you. I don't want to see any employee face that. I really don't. And if you have gone through those things, I believe you, and I'd like to find a way forward. What have you done, Mayor Shore, to find a way forward from that? You put together diversity committee and alliance. You've asked them all to sign a non-disclosure. They can't even talk about what happens outside of that room. It's disgusting. What have you done? In, in response to my federal lawsuit, you said, "We have not heard any other specific complaints." There was one individual who has not been happy. I don't want to minimize any concerns here, but we've addressed that situation quickly, and we've moved forward. That was January of 2019, you stated that. Here in May of 19, I would retract that in a heartbeat if I said there was no racism in the fire department, and I know there have been in the past. I know the incident that led to the lawsuit. I mean, I know that all happened, and we'll address it. What have you done, Andy Shore, to address that? I'm still fighting tooth and nail just to keep my career. I'm on unpaid leave right now while you guys are fighting my work comp for PTSD. What are you doing other than giving me the flux right now, stressing me out, and building alliances of my brothers and sisters to fight against me in just the racial equity aspect of my fight? What are you doing, sir? With Randall Teller-Farrow, you said you had not heard good things, and to be honest with you, I have not had a chance to sit down with the chief and chat with him. I want to hear how it's going. I want to hear about the people who are being affected and how, and hear how it's going. Five months later, Chief Teller-Farrow had to resign, because you never had that talk with him. You can't walk anywhere in this city. You can't be anywhere that I'm not going to be right there to point these things out. Kingham, or whoever you hire is not going to help you. I will be right there every step of the way. Make it right.
Thank you. That was our final speaker this evening.
Okay, thank you. With that, we are at 8:43, and no further business for the Lansing City Council. We are adjourned.